Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 6th, 2015 regular meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute the flag and we remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Michael Compare, a dedicated Milford police officer who passed away earlier this month. Michael cared deeply about Milford and gave back to his community in all that he did. We all will miss you, Michael.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the word
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson.
Uh, Madam Secretary, Alderman Anderson would like to be excused.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Beer?
Here.
Alderman Casey?
Here.
Alderman Fontana?
Here.
Alderman Gorman?
Here.
Alderman Genotasio?
Here.
Alderman Golden?
Here.
Alderman Hardeman?
Here.
Alderman Kubek?
Alderman Shaw?
Alderman Smith?
Alderman Stamford?
Madam Secretary, Alderman Stamford would like to be excused as well.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Also, Alderman Veccharelli would like to be excused for personal reasons, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Vitro?
Here.
Alderman Vitale?
Here.
We have eleven present, we do have a quorum. The next portion of our meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the Board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the Board can do so at this time.
I guess I'm the only one. Good evening. My name is Len Wosniewski and I live at Nine River Street, and I've been there for the last seven and a half years. And I'm here to speak regarding Eli's application to get on to, on the agenda, I guess if I'm correct. I just want to tell you a little bit about Eli's. I've known Rick now for, I don't know, I guess the better part of two years since he, they bought the establishment and turned it into the restaurant that it is. And I can just tell you that, being his next-door neighbor, everything he said that he was going to do, he did, and a little bit more. And I didn't know him before that, and I was actually, wasn't really in favor of Eli's before that. But they've been good neighbors, and they've done everything they said they were gonna do. And that's it, that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, Alderman Frank Smith. Agenda item number three, consideration of minutes.
I'm new at majority leader, so bear with me. I move that we accept the minutes of the previous Board of Aldermen meeting. I move that we accept the minutes of the previous Board of Aldermen meeting.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On June 1st, minutes under public statements, Jim Amon, it says here, he stated that he had spoken with me about Eli's restaurant, and I have not spoken to him about that, and I just wanted that corrected.
Thank you, Alderman Fontana. Any more discussion on the motion? Minutes be accepted as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to accept minutes of the special organizational meeting of the Board of Aldermen. There were none. There was none.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Under Chairman's report, I'd like to acknowledge the 25th anniversary of the ADA, as you all saw out front as you approached the City Hall, and all the fine work that they have done for us in the years that they've worked so hard to achieve.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Vitale? Recession's over. Moving on to new business. Agenda item number six, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Is there a report from the mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everybody had a happy and healthy 4th of July that was spirited with illuminations and pomp and parade and everything else that's good about Independence Day, celebrating our nation's birth. I know that we had a rousing July 2nd. It was the first kickoff of the summer festivities with the Run Runners and bands and food trucks and fire trucks that was met with a lot of happy people. According to some reports, over 25,000 people came to downtown and had a good time, enjoyed themselves. There were pretty widespread positive feedback from that event, and I do want to thank the chairperson of that event, Dan Worrell, who did a lot to put that together, a lot of coordination with the help of Public Works, Milford Police Department, the Fire Department, the Health Department, Ray Swift in the Harbor and the Marina. So a lot of people went into making this first inaugural event a success, and I think it bodes well for future kickoff of summer events in 2016, 17, 18, and years to come. Also, thank you to the folks who supported it financially, the Devon Rotary, Shop Right, Milford Bank, who's always there with the financial help. But a lot of people did a lot of work, and I did want to thank them at this meeting for everything they did to make that event so successful. I also wanted to follow up with what Chairman Vitro said. This is the 25th year of the Americans with Disability Act. 25 years ago, George H.W. Bush signed the law, and since then, people who had previously not had access and opportunities, millions of Americans now have and are able to do things that previously they couldn't do because of impediments and hurdles. But other than that, I would like to acknowledge our Finance Director, Peter Erdisi, and the entire Finance Department, as you see under Mayor's Report 6A. Peter and his team have once again received the highest honor from the GF away, the Government Finance Officers Association, for their financial reporting and government operations. So kudos to Peter. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request your consideration and action on those items listed in your agenda, items 8A through 8H. If I can help provide additional information, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item number seven, we have no unfinished business. Moving on to agenda item 8A. Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the request for the acceptance of the attached Municipal and State Agency Electric Vehicle Charging Station Reimbursement Program grant, and to authorize the mayor, Director of Community Development, and City Attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said program.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Genotasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Board. Through you, Mr. Chairman, and Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, I noticed in the application that the box was checked off for, just bear with me, please, that there is shelter at the proposed installation site, and I was wondering if you can just explain exactly which, what the shelter is that's there currently?
Sure. The proposed site that we applied for is behind the library, adjacent to the tennis courts and the Rotary Pavilion. So the Rotary Pavilion, as well as the library, would be the two shelter points. This is a state grant that the city is receiving. Part of the application process was, we had to check off certain boxes that was critical to us being awarded this grant. We've decided on the rear of the library, the Fowler Parking Lot, for, in addition to the sheltering aspect, the fact that this grant will pay for us to bolster the type of electrical line that we have down there. I think we have a 110 down there now, and so we'll be able to bring at least a 220 down there. So that will allow for better power for events like the Oktoberfest and the Irish Fest, and some of the other things that require more power than we can have right now, and hopefully we'll have to rely less on generators, noisy gas-powered generators, into the future. So this is two purposes. The first purpose is, we get a grant to pay for electric vehicle charging stations. The second opportunity that will be realized is that this grant will also pay for bringing a higher kilowattage of power down to this area. So it has many benefits.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up. Mayor Blake, it says that the shelter has to be able to equip two cars, two motor vehicles. So can you just be a little more specific? These two cars are gonna drive under, where exactly is this shelter going to be? Like, it says that it has to be out of the weather. So I just, I'm trying to get an idea of where this station is gonna be, where these cars are gonna be able to pull in and pull out, and there's gonna be, you know, obviously there's gotta be enough room to accommodate that.
It's my understanding that the shelter does not have to be for the vehicles. The shelter has to be for people to be out of the rain if they need to pull into a parking lot and wait with, not in their car, while their vehicle's charged. So we need a shelter area for drivers who pull into this electric vehicle charging station and have to wait for their vehicles to actually charge. Oftentimes, the vehicles will charge while they're doing their errands, or going to the restaurants, or heading into the library, but some people will know about this electrical vehicle charging station and go there for the exclusive purpose of charging their vehicle. And during that period of time, they need somewhere to wait. So the Pavilion is an ideal spot. The library during operational hours are an ideal spot, but I believe that's what the application means when it says a shelter nearby.
And reading through this, I also, what stood out to me was the fact that we cannot realize any revenue through this for three years in order to receive this grant, and then after the three-year period, we'll be able to get paid for the energy that's being used?
Yeah, as part of the terms and conditions of this grant, there is a period of time where we're not allowed to charge for the electricity. From all accounts, it's a relatively de minimis amount, but after that period of time, we can put a credit card reader onto the electric charging station and charge customers the going rate. But for at least a period of time, we are prohibited from doing that as part of receiving these grant monies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor, just one more question on this application. I see that this project has to be completed by August 1st, so if approved tonight, we have this in line for completion in time?
Yes, our Public Works Department has already teed it up. I don't know if our director is here. He's in the building, I think, working on the air conditioning, but he is in the building if you have any questions, but this is something that is ready to go. The equipment has been identified and ready to order as soon as your Board approves this this evening, you know, with the consideration of this Board this evening.
Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor. Some further explanation. The charging stations, the enforcement, area of enforcement, time limits, and I heard you say that you can just leave your vehicle, go to a restaurant, whatever. So is there a monopoly on that car staying all day, four hours, to be charged at maybe a 20-minute charge, and it's not gonna allow easy access for somebody else to use that charging station? And how is it gonna be, actually, how is it gonna be enforced?
This will be the first Milford-run charging station in the city to date. We haven't worked out all of the procedural issues associated with this. We do have a meeting with our Police Department, our Parking Authority, as well as our Public Works Department prior to this going online, to confirm all the ins and outs, but there will be, there will be some rules and regulations associated with those vehicles who wanna park there in terms of time limits and everything else.
And furthermore, just to follow up, my suggestion would be that these people would need to be with their vehicle and not go shopping while it's charging, because I don't know, unless you take a charge that is zero and have nothing left in the charge, in the battery, that it may take two hours, or three hours, or four hours to charge. I have no idea. But at least there has to be, and I don't know how many electric vehicles we have in the city, or what the population of the EVs are, but I think it needs to be reckoned with as to how long those cars can stay in one spot without an owner or without somebody in the vehicle. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale. I'm not gonna pretend that this isn't a laboratory experiment. This is our first crack at this. There may be some issues. There may be some hurdles that we have to overcome, and some lessons learned that we're gonna experience over the next several months as this new charging station is rolled out. So I will continue to report back to you about the progress of this station and how well it's being utilized. I mean, there may be the, there may be no one going to this charging station, and in that case, this will be the last charging station that we install. If this is successful, we'll be back to you with perhaps more grant opportunities to install more charging stations in other locations in the city, but this is a test. This is something that we're going to be experiencing for the first time. We're not recreating the wheel. Municipalities all across the state and country have these already, so we are able to take a look at what has worked well in other communities and not so well as well, but it will be a learning experience.
Alderman Genotasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Mayor Blake, it sounds to me that this location was chosen for multiple reasons, I guess, to increase the wattage down at Fowler Field for events, and also accommodate the energy electric cars as well. So I'm assuming this grant will be available in the future, or similar grants, where possibly we can maybe facilitate some of these recharging stations, possibly in the parking lot that we are close to newly developing?
Absolutely.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith, agenda item 8B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve a request for the attached resolution regarding RFP for the lease purchase of certain Department of Public Works equipment and vehicles.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Genotasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I see the Public Works Director in the audience, if he can come up to the podium and possibly give us a summary of what the intentions are.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. What we're looking to do is to do a lease purchase for some equipment. The city has predominantly never done this before. It's an outside financing company. The interest rate, depending on the term of the lease, is anywhere a little over 3% to a little under 3%, and it's some equipment that I think we badly are in need of acquiring. One is a front-loading trash truck, and one is a side-armed automated trash truck also. In other words, it could take a barrel that we presently use on a tipper, or manually do, and it will actually, from your cab, you'll be able to put it into the truck and compact it. It's really where the industry's going, as trash collection is going. It reduces workers' comp claims. People don't have to get in and out of trucks any longer. It extends the longevity of the vehicles. It's really where most private haulers are now, and the way this lease purchase works, there's a cost benefit of, like I said, a worker's comp reduction, and I think it's just the way to go.
Through you to Director Salee. Mr. Salee, I know there's been some issues in the past with, some of my constituents have reached out to me from time to time. There's always been an issue with having a large garbage can or receptacle, and there's been situations from time to time where their can has actually been tagged because it exceeds, I believe, 44 gallons, is that correct, or 43 gallons?
It's actually, it's actually 42 gallons. The way these bins work, the tippers that we presently have exclusively for recycling are 96 gallons. The mayor is in the process, with myself, looking at getting tippers for actually the trash also, and that's another part. It'll eliminate that. These lifts, these automated lifts can lift up to 350 pounds. That's one of the reasons why employees no longer will get out and have to drag something out. It's a lift that will extend up to 15 feet. It's an articulating lift, so you can, anyone that used a joystick in their lives could use it, could move barrels around. Alderman Gorman, and, I'm sorry, Alderman Anderson isn't here, but Alderman Gorman, we went up to Massachusetts, and he could probably, you know, express or explain a little bit better than I on how well it works, these tippers.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through you. So can we expect possibly down the road, 'cause that's through a city ordinance, the 42-gallon can, and I know a lot of people in the past have actually went out and purchased cans, not knowing that there is a specific ordinance, and, you know, it becomes a detriment because now their garbage isn't being picked up, now they have to go out and buy the correct cans. So now with this new mechanism to pick up the trash, would you feel that maybe eventually that ordinance can be revisited, and we can possibly, you know, give the homeowners and the citizens of Milford a little more flexibility with the type of garbage cans that they can actually purchase?
Yes, Alderman Genotasio. Actually, the way, where we're looking, moving forward, would be, we will have tippers not only for the recycling, which we presently do, but we'll have tippers for trash, so exactly is the case. This will be the first step in it. It's almost like an orientation, get our staff used to it, get people used to it. We're gonna test model it on two or three runs, and, like I said before, it's really where the industry is going. It eliminates almost exclusively lower back issues and the issues, you're not getting in and out of trucks. So yes, I would see us doing that. We estimate that in order to change over to the trash component, which the mayor has authorized us to look into for this coming next year, it's about $1 million to buy the tippers somewhere in that, the containers, not the tippers, the containers. And I think that would eliminate a lot of these problems. They're 96 gallons, which is the equivalent of two garbage cans. And the other component is too, is looking at how we're collecting our trash, you know, and really getting more involved with the recycling, expanding the recycling. And I think I've explained this to the Board previously, 53% of the waste that comes through is paper waste that we could recycle, and the other 23% is yard waste, green waste. So there's a huge component that we should be going after.
Okay, thank you for your explanation.
Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the Director. Mr. Salee, with this new articulating arm on this new particular vehicle, will that reduce the number of personnel that needs to be with a vehicle at any one time?
I believe it will give us the potential to do that. That isn't our ultimate goal right now. Our goal is to eliminate or reduce our workers' comp, and become more efficient, and to mirror what the private industry's doing, which is going to automation through retirements and other things. Would I see us doing that? More than likely, yes, but at the present time, that isn't our goal.
It may not be a goal, but the fact remains that, right now, there are what, the driver and two other people with a truck?
Yes.
So if you have this particular vehicle, who operates the joystick? Is it operated from the driver's seat?
There's a lot of different ways to do it, but yes, it's, it's a, it's not a typical driving vehicle like we do, where people are driving on the left-hand side. It's a right-hand driving with an automation component, or a stick on that same side. So it could be a one-person truck, but there's other components that could happen too. Sometimes some towns still put two people on it, so they can bring tippers from one side, so they're only going down one side of the road at a time.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith, agenda item 8C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to seek the approval requested for the purpose of entering into an energy-saving performance contract, wherein the city of Milford will realize the cost savings, and to authorize the mayor, Director of Public Works, and City Attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said performance agreements.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Public Works Director. Is there a cost for the performance agreement?
Yes, Alderman Gorman, there is not a cost to the city. What we're looking at at this, similar to the other performance or energy performance contracts that we've entered into, what we look to do is, we look to partner with a company that will either through incentives, or through loans, or through their own capital, finance energy savings projects throughout the city. And what they'll do is, they'll take the energy savings we have off these projects, from these new lights, new motors, new AC units, and they will pay themselves back with a profit. And then, when that term is done, and it can be anywhere from three to 10 years, when that term is done, then we own the equipment, there's no capital outlay for the city. It's really a win-win. We're not, most of these aren't immediate returns, but they're long-term investments with no outlay to the city.
No net cost to the city whatsoever?
No.
Thank you.
Alderman Genotasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director Salee. Mr. Salee, can you just give us a timeframe of the payback on this?
Like I said, Alderman Genotasio, it's, depending on the project, it's anywhere between three to eight years, nine years, that's on the higher end, but for the most part, they're usually a three-to-four-year payback. An example, one of the ones we're looking at right now is the treatment plant at Beaverbrook. We have an initial evaluation that was done. They were looking at LED lights throughout the whole plant, they were looking at HVAC units at the whole plant, but the other thing, they were looking at blower units. Our blower units are close to the end of their usefulness. They're also not automated or variable speed, so they kinda run almost full bore at the at the They're also not automated or variable speed, so they kind of run almost full bore at the Beaverbrook plant. The motors themselves with installation are close to $400,000. The company that we're discussing this with will come in at their own capital and put all brand-new motors in, variable-speed drives. It will reduce the electricity consumption almost 40% on these motors. And the only way they get paid is if what they say works. Getting back to Alderman Gorman, the only, the only thing that would cost the city money is if we agreed to a contract, they did the evaluation, and then we backed out of it. Then we would have to pay an engineering component, so I want to just make sure I'm clear on that. But if we move forward with the contract, there's no outlay. And if they make a mistake and there's no realized savings, it doesn't cost the city anything. We get the equipment for free. These blowers have a shelf life or a lifespan of anywhere between 25 and 30 years. So they're a major investment that the city doesn't have to pay for.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Saly, can you share with us what it actually costs the city to run the Beaverbrook plant? What we spend in energy costs per year?
You know, I apologize, I don't have that exact number, so I wouldn't want to tell you. But I will tell you that the Beaverbrook and the Husatonic plant are the two biggest energy users in the city, but I will get that number for you and forward it to the Alderman. Alderman?
And Mr. Chairman, the Beaverbrook plant, the Husatonic plant, and the 50 other pump stations that we have, we use over $1 million worth of electricity each year. So as the Public Works Director did say, it's a huge user of electricity. And if we're going to focus anywhere on reducing our costs, it really has to be the biggest producer of electricity.
Thank you.
Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. The emails in here are mostly about the Beaverbrook, and that's the emails that we have here. This authorization is across the board for energy projects impacting Public Works? Is that?
It's, what we've done is we've come before you three or four other times for energy projects. This is more of a global, if we see a project that we think it warrants us investigating, that we investigate it and we have the authorization to, you know, go forward with it on other buildings.
So this is to go forward and allow you to investigate these contracts, but also to enter into the contracts as well?
I'm sorry, I missed the last.
To investigate the contracts, but also to enter into those contracts as well, where there's an energy savings?
It's really a collaboration effect of Peter, Peter Iredice, our finance director, the mayor, myself, and looking at it and saying, does it make sense? And again, going back, we're looking at something that has zero outlay to the city, a return on investment at the high eight years, at the low more like three years, and it improves our energy efficiency as a whole.
And I'm sorry, just to follow up, and I want to underline that. So your criteria to enter into this would be zero cost to the city in all cases? Except for, as noted to Alderman Gorman?
Yeah. I would anticipate unless something else comes up, we would be coming before the, yes, yes, we would come before the, anything that costs us money, that we would have to write a check for, that we would come before the Alderman and get their approvals. Thanks.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith, Agenda Item 8D.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the approval requested in the attached resolution regarding establishment of accounts related to the Milford Public Works Department Equipment Fund.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Casey.
Through you to the Director. As I understand this proposal, this would allow the Public Works to, I guess, rent or make available equipment and staff to private individuals. Is that correct?
Yes, Alderman Casey. The way it works right now, we, there's no mechanism to be able to charge someone for our equipment or our staff if we're working alongside. An example, if we're doing a sewer project and they wanted to extend the sewer lateral, you know, from where technically our ordinance says behind the sidewalk to their property, to their building. We really can't do that. We can't charge if there's repairs and things like that. So what would happen is, we're not looking to necessarily do it, we just want the authorization to be able to have the option. That's number one. Number two, we've talked to a few of the restaurateurs in, I'm sorry, in Milford Center about the amount of debris that happens on Friday nights and Saturday nights, which in turn, there's some broken glass, there's bottles, there's paper, miscellaneous things. Our feeling was, after talking with some of the restaurant owners, was we thought that they should share in letting us take our street sweeper and sweep maybe some of the municipal lots, but also the city streets and some of the private areas, and they would pay the city for that cost. Predominantly, this past week, there was some planters that were kicked over that we had our staff go out and fix. It obviously was someone that was vandalizing. And the restaurateurs feel, you know, the initial response is they would be happy to be part of that solution so that when people come in a Saturday morning or Sunday morning, there's not glass bottles broken and there's not debris all over, say down Fowler Field, Lisbon Landing, things like that.
And just to follow up, the staff that would, that would work this equipment, would they be, would they be paid as part of the regular wages or would they be paid in addition to the, to the private contribution?
It would, they would get their regular wages. Predominantly, this is a time and a half component for the most part because it's on a Saturday or it's a double time on a Sunday. This past weekend, we had the street sweeper come down and do Milford Center on Saturday. We had people coming and doing other cleaning associated with events that happened over the weekend.
Just one more follow-up. So it seems what you currently envision is these, the use, the private uses of this would be things that are related to the public-private functions. You're not envisioning right now just to rent out the equipment and the services to people for strictly private purposes or construction, things like that?
Yeah, I mean, that isn't our goal, but I mean, an example, we would like the opportunity. There's been a few beach associations that approached us, private beach associations that approached us about using our beach rake. I was actually at Woodmont today, speaking with some property owners over there that they were interested in it. We literally drive by that beach. It wouldn't take us long. It would be a revenue source off some of the cost of the equipment, wear and tear on the equipment, where they're already. There's a whole host of areas or examples I can show you, but that's, those are really predominantly what we're looking for. We want the authorization so we can have an account to put it in.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Director. I have a question, but what got my eye on it at this point would be that in Woodmont, that if you're passing by that beach, you could use and rake those beaches, but don't the people of Woodmont get that, get that perk anyway because of the extra taxes they pay, et cetera?
No, this is, this is Mr. Vitale, Alderman Vitale, this is past the public beach. There's a group of about eight homes that, I went for something else today and while I was there, they expressed an interest. Is there a way that they could do that?
But that beach is not part of the Woodmont area?
It's a private association, but we go, we go right by it from that Woodmont beach, go all the way down to Oyster River, which we do both beaches.
Thank you. The other thing was the fact that would the payment, you're saying that this would be done after hours, time and a half, before the next morning, so everything is cleaned up, so you'll have people on call to do these things if that private restaurant wants or the restaurateurs want that cleanup? And if they do want that cleanup, they're going to realize the total payment for that cleanup? Is that true?
Yes, they would pay all the costs.
And do we have a schedule already for per hour, per man, or per machine?
We're figuring somewhere in the ballpark of about $100 an hour for man and machine.
That would, $100 an hour would suffice with the wear and tear on the machines and getting everybody out there?
I, for one man, if we brought another truck, it would be another 100. It might be 125. We haven't worked at the exact dollar. Between 100 and 125 dollars.
So would be fully on the part or on the, the cost would be fully on the, on the restaurateurs?
Just, just to give you an example, right now when there's an issue, we send employees out at time and a half or double time to clean it anyways. So this is actually a cost savings to the city.
So if you have that happening already, why would they want to do that? Why would they want to take on that cost?
Because being good citizens, they realize that they should be responsible for some of the actions that happen. This isn't just normal wear and tear. This isn't an event like we have, you know, a concert afterwards that we're responsible for. This is late at night, a lot of activity that's happening down in Milford Center, that there's, there should be some shared responsibility to it.
Literally, this would be every Saturday, Friday, Saturday night?
It would be on a trial basis when needed. An example, when we know there's a heavy weekend, like a Fourth of July weekend, obviously we're going to do it, and then we'd sporadically look and evaluate. I normally make my rounds on a Saturday or Sunday morning just to see where things are and see what really needs to be cleaned, what isn't cleaned. It would be, we would have the authorization from the board to accept it, but also the authorization from the restaurant owners and other business owners.
Other than that big event, Oyster Festival or festivals, the thousands of people that go down to Daniel Street on a Saturday, Friday, Saturday night, that wouldn't constitute a cleaning up during the night by the individuals with the use of Public Works equipment?
We would, we would like to probably do it once every weekend during the summertime. We're not going to be wasteful, though. We don't want to just, it's kind of almost like on a call basis. We make a decision in the morning to take a look at it. If we get a lot of complaints the night before of activity or debris, so we're not, we're not going to schedule it every week unless we deem it's necessary.
But as you said before, you clean it up anyway?
When we get a call, yes. We normally get, we have people, like if there's a lot of broken glass, we will get a call, could you please come down and clean it? We have to bring someone in at three-hour minimum. That's a contractual obligation. So we bring people in to clean it.
Other than that, who cleans it up on a Friday night or Saturday night?
It wouldn't get cleaned if we didn't clean it. It wouldn't get cleaned if we didn't clean it, unless a good citizen walks by and cleans it up.
But that's what I'm saying, so every Friday, Saturday night, you guys?
But every Friday and Saturday night, it doesn't happen. It's, it's like everything. It's, sometimes it's a very heavy weekend, sometimes it's a light weekend. Sometimes we have people that are very respectful. Sometimes we don't have people that are respectful. So it's.
Thank you for your confidence.
Thanks.
Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman, through you. Just, I know you're talking about this, it's just use in Milford, that the equipment. It's not wholly expressed here, but that's why I'm asking the question. That as far as the equipment goes, it's equipment and personnel that's used within Milford only. So there would never be a scenario that the equipment would be leased or loaned or to another municipality?
Well, I would say this, that we have a shared component with our budding towns. An example, Orange was doing some paving two weeks ago and needed some catch basin, catch basin risers, and we let them take those and then they're going to refund them. But, so I don't want to say that we would never do that. I mean, if there was a need that an abutting town had a need for it, that's not our goal, though, no. I mean, but we all, all the abutting towns share when there's a need or when someone has, has a requirement.
And I actually, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, just to add on to that, the city of Milford does have mutual aid agreements with our surrounding town for not just fire and police, but public works needs as well.
And I'm thinking it's a good thing, but since what we talked about was Milford, I wanted to know that this fund would be able to catch that money now. Is that correct?
Yes. And this is predominantly more for private businesses, residents in Milford, when we're in an area working and we have an opportunity to do something.
Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Public Works Director. Do you have a scope of other work or services that may be available to area businesses as well, other than beach sweeping and parking lot cleaning and?
Really, Alderman Gorman, it kind of evolves as we're going through, but I would think those would be the two items. We're not looking to get into the business of competing against private businesses, but when like an association comes to us and says we could use your help, and it's a private association, we want to have the opportunity to at least charge for that. If it was, you know, like if it was public land, it's different, but when it's a private association. But I could see, say a VAC truck or anything like, any equipment that we have that we could use when there's an issue. I think we could, you know, there's a few pieces of equipment we could use.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Alderman Frank Smith, Agenda Item 8E.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the, in the interest of clarity, I'm going to refer to a request for approval of the following resolution as it appears in your Aldermanic package resolution regarding establishment of accounts related to downtown Milford parking, whereas the city of Milford is in the process of acquiring parcels located in the downtown area for the purpose of municipal parking, and whereas certain portions of these parcels are for the purpose of paid commuter parking, and whereas certain parcels may be acquired with tenants in possession who will pay rents to the city of Milford upon conveyance, whereas it is in the best interest of the city of Milford to establish an account related to such transactions. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Milford that the Finance Director is hereby authorized and directed to establish a dedicated special revenue fund account for the purpose of depositing all monies received from paid commuter parking and tenant rent payments. It is further resolved that the Finance Director is hereby authorized and directed to establish a dedicated reserve fund from which the mayor, city attorney, and Finance Director are authorized to expend monies received for the purpose of maintaining, repairing, and constructing downtown parking infrastructure.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Beer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Mayor. Guessing this is in anticipation of us closing on the property here downtown, and I guess the first question is, do we have an anticipated closing date on that property?
I will probably defer to the city attorney. It's my understanding that within the month, two of the four properties will have a closing date, again, sometime within the next month, perhaps a little bit longer for the two others. But once we take possession of these properties, we are the landlords. For at least one, two of those properties, there are tenants, and we will have to be a good landlord and plow the parking lot in the wintertime, repair the roof if there's leaks, ensure that those rents are collected. So there are some costs that are going to be involved with just maintaining this property. Also, we want to create a reserve fund because we do have plans to repurpose this property, expand the parking. We are going to be able to do some initial parking expansion right off the back, right off the bat, but we have a vision for a good economic development parcel to really improve the gateway of our downtown, complete with significant parking enhancements, and that all costs money. So we do have a need through this resolution to establish a fund, one, to maintain the property as landlords, but two, to start generating some revenue so that we can put it towards some of these expansion ideas that the city has into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One more question through the Mayor. So once this takes place, I'll assume we have some kind of property management or somebody that's going to act as a property manager for these properties? And secondly, we're going to have somebody acting as a receiver for the parking fees? Is that going to go through Milford Park Transit or something? Are we going to do that separately? Have you worked out any of these details you might be able to share with us at this point?
We have had several meetings over the last two weeks about those very issues. We are presently investigating and interviewing property management outfits. And in terms of the parking, there will be a portion of the parking that there will be a day rate similar to what is transpiring right now under private ownership. And the goal is to likely have the property management outfit take on that responsibility as well. There's a possibility that that's a separate entity. We've had negotiations with Milford Transit, whether they may want to be involved. We've had conversations with several city departments, their involvement, but it is something that over the next month, by the time that, by the time we take possession of all four properties, we will have resolved. And likely there will be, over the course of the next three years, additional resolutions coming to your board, additional budgetary items, both revenue that's being generated and costs associated with these four parcels of property that you're going to have to weigh in on.
Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, what is our overall commitment, the timeframe for the leases?
I believe for the front parcel that is adjacent to River Street, that structure, I believe it's two to three years out is the longest lease. June of 2018 is the lease that's the longest.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith, Agenda Item 8F.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached allocation transfer number four, vehicle acquisition program.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith, Agenda Item 8G.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding establishment of an account for accepting donations made to Milford Government Access Television.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number nine.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, there is, yes, Mr. Mayor.
There is an 8H.
There is? I don't see it. Added to the agenda? Alderman Frank Smith, Agenda Item 8H.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached memorandum of agreement between the Southwestern Regional Communications Center Incorporated and the City of Milford.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item nine, new business not on the agenda which will be introduced by two-thirds vote as present and counted. Is there any new business? Hearing none, all in favor? We move on to move, item number 10, budget memo transfers. Alderman Frank Smith.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve consideration of budget memo transfers number 13 and 14, funds, funds 10, fiscal year 15.
Has been made and seconded. All, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith, Agenda item number 11, refunds.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve consideration of refunds. No refunds processed for July 6th, yes, there's no refunds to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Move on to Agenda item number 12, report of standing committees. Are there any reports from any standing committees? Seeing none, move on to Agenda item number 13. Is there any reports from any of our special committees? Hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda item number 14, executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss consideration of settlement Balding Precision Incorporated versus City of Milford regarding 61 Woodmont Road. Under 14B, consideration of settlement 10 Row Avenue LLC versus City of Milford regarding 10 Row Avenue. And under 14C, consideration of settlement U.F. Keith versus City of Milford regarding 1 Lawrence Court. Joining us in executive session for item 14A through 14C will be the Mayor, City Attorney, John Bertram, and City Assessor, Dan Thomas. Is there a motion? All in favor? We're in executive session. We are now back from executive session. Alderman Frank Smith.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the city to accept consideration of settlement of Balding Precision Incorporated versus City of Milford regarding 61 Woodmont Road in accordance with the recommendations of the City Assessor and City Attorney as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the city to accept consideration of settlement of 10 Row Avenue LLC versus City of Milford regarding 10 Row Avenue in accordance with the recommendations of the City Assessor and City Attorney as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the city to accept consideration of settlement of U.F. Keith versus City of Milford regarding 1 Lawrence Court in accordance with the recommendations of the City Assessor and City Attorney as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.